Pledge the nations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is to approve the county clerk's certification on the April 2nd, 2019 municipal election results. The official results are in your board packet. And the county clerk has certified these results. The two candidates receiving the highest number of votes was Mr. Terry McDaniel with 805 votes, and Mr. Richard Rudolph with 669 votes. I would like to take a moment to congratulate both of you, and thank you for your continued service on the board.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Move to accept the official results of the April 2nd, 2019 election, and declare Terry McDaniel and Richard Rudolph as elected directors to serve a three-year term on the Board of Education of the reorganized school district R2, St. Genevieve County, Missouri.
I think. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next thing I need to do with you is administer the oath of office to the newly-elected board members. So if you would please rise. Okay. If you'll rise up. Let me grab my other cup while you're reading. Okay. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Terry McDaniel.
I'm Richard Rudolph.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the school director.
The duty of the school director.
In the St. Genevieve County R2 school district.
In the St. Genevieve County R2 school district.
County of St. Genevieve.
County of St. Genevieve.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
Thank you. Next, we have the election of the board presidents. The nominations are now... I'd like to nominate Kayden Moll. I knew that nominations cease and we elect by acclamation. Most of the other nominations. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Rudolph.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something after doing this. I'd like to thank all of you for supporting me as president for the last year. As you all know, and with you as president, oh my gosh, with you as principals coming to our meetings and telling us what an amazing school districts we have. Well, we all have to work together to get that. So it's staff, it's faculty, it's board members, it's administration, it's parents, it's... I don't want to forget the custodians and the... It comes to everybody, we all work together. And I had mixed emotions about this, I really did. But you all know that I have grandkids that go to Valley, and I have to support them. So now if I'm somewhere and I'm wearing a blue shirt, then I won't feel quite as bad. I have three grandkids in Kansas, and we go out there, and I wear their colors. But it's not the same as being in St. Genevieve. I love you all. You have been so supportive. And it was an honor for me to hold this position. But I'm not giving up. You know, I'm gonna run next year, so... Anybody out there that wants to run, go ahead. You know, I'm gonna fight because this means that much to me. So I'm not just... I may not just be the president, but guess what? I'm on the Board of Education, and that means a lot. And I'll be able to... And I'll still be able to be part of the MSBA. I mean, those people are... They're amazing. They want us to succeed. And we'll still... I'll still go to the legislators, all of us. It's not just me, and I don't want this to be about me. It's all of us. We all do that. So for anybody that doesn't think that we get training, are educated every year, and sometimes two or three times a year. You know, we do... We love our school district. We're gonna fight for it, and it's a good day to be a dragon.
I've enjoyed sitting to write at you.
Sitting down there. I have to move.
And I will enjoy standing over.
I just want to tell Martha and the board thank you for the vote of confidence, but Martha hasn't just done, but does a terrific job of leading this board. And I'm gonna tell you, she could be the MSBA state president. She's been asked to be nominated multiple times, and has declined because she chooses to devote most of her time to the students of this district and her grandkids. And that would pull her away from that. So she is a super-member of this community, and has been a super-board president, and continues to be a super-school board member. Thanks, Martha.
You're welcome.
Unless you want to be Martha and let...
Oh my gosh. Hey, my hair's a little short. So I get to sit by you, Eric.
Careful, he's trying to break the sash.
All right.
Intention does it all without compensation. It's a freebie.
She makes twice what we make.
I'm working my way up to zero.
The next item we have to elect or the next position is board vice president. Do I have any nominations for that position?
I'm going to elect John Clark as vice president.
Move the nominations cease and we elect by acclamation.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't have a speech here. Thank you.
Okay. Election of delegate for MSBA. Do I have any nomination?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Harry Boswell.
I move to elect Robert O'Neal as delegate for the MSBA delegates simply.
Okay. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we need a second?
It says no, but it's in the books, so I'm just gonna write it down. Okay, so Martha made a motion.
I'm gonna make an alter. Thank you. Sorry, I got gone.
So... Congratulations, Mr. Boswell.
Thank you. I was that once, a couple others.
Okay. Next, we have alternate delegate for MSBA. Do I have a nomination?
I'll make a motion to nominate Martha Reese Singer.
I move to elect Martha Reese Singer by acclamation as alternate delegate for MSBA delegates simply.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Reese Singer.
I would have was...
Now I need a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
Move to adjourn the reorganizational session of the Board of Education of the reorganized school district number R2, St. Genevieve County, Missouri.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Seven, eleven, PM. All right. So I'll pass the book. And the meeting called to order, stick?
The meeting called.
All right.
All right. Let's call the regular session order. Do we need to do a pledge again? I think it lasts a while. At seven twelve. The second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda of April 16, 2019, regular meeting as of then.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as president.
Second. I have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is public participation. Anyone? Next, we have recorder, the superintendent.
Thank you. In your board packet, you should have, I believe there's one, note of appreciation in there. The next item is the recognition retirement banquet that will be held on Friday, May 10th, at the St. Genevieve KC Hall. Once again, the banquet is for current employees and their spouses or significant others, retirees, and board members and their spouses and others. It's always a great night. It's one of my favorite nights of the year, just to recognize the great things that are happening here and all the great people that we have in the classroom and working for this district. I will share, you know, with the retirees, if you're seeing this, please call district office and talk to Donna Hook to get your RSVP in. You are more than welcome. And we really enjoy seeing our retirees attend the banquet. So looking forward to that. And Paul's working really hard on it.
Is there a way to make cars on with them to notify them?
I would have to ask Donna Hook. She really handles all of it. I believe she sends them an invitation. Like, you received an invitation. I believe she knows them, but we will follow up and check with her tomorrow to make sure. The next thing on the agenda is to look at kindergarten enrollment results. Bloomsdale Elementary is on the left. They had registration on Saturday, March 23rd. The date here is from 2012... From the 2012-13 school year all the way to 1920. If you look down at 1920, you see that we had 46 students, according to what I received, attend registration and participate in that process. Last year, we had 48, so that number is pretty close. And then we had 62 students show up at Bloomsdale. And that fluctuates. We have people moving in the community, people move out of the community, people didn't know about registration even though we say it over and over. So if you have a family member or a neighbor, or you know anyone with a child coming to kindergarten this fall, please have them contact the district, and we will put you in touch with our early childhood program to get them a screening done before August. With the number of the 46 at Bloomsdale right now, we feel comfortable with three teachers. But if it goes up to 60, 62, Mrs. Usman and I have a plan to make sure that we're able to serve those students and address those needs. So we'll be in discussion with you later this year in the meantime, as always. At St. Genevieve, yes.
Correctly found wrongly, the principals, it's probably the hardest age in the whole district to subject enrollment. All the other grades, you've got a basis. You've got a pre-registration, which doesn't always work out in your favor. Now, it's the hardest one because you have them outside of registration. You have nothing to base it on.
Very hard.
And you want... And people want supplies for the students. They want teachers, they want all that stuff. So they have folks. Let them know. Let them know.
At St. Genevieve Elementary, registration is on Saturday, March 30th. Again, the same school year ranges are up there. For 1920, we had 68 students register and participate in registration. Again, we're not sure where that'll end up. If you look at 2017, '18, we had 68 register, and then we had 84 show up. So we believe right now that we're... We have enough sections, and we can handle if this grows significantly. But once again, we'll keep an eye on it as the first day gets closer and be in touch with you as we know a little bit more in the early August. Next item, I think I skipped one, is to discuss the last day of school. As of right now, the last day of school would be... Will be on Tuesday, May 28. It is from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a half-day with our certified staff, our teacher, workday, and checkout on Wednesday, May 29. I will share with the board and the public that we are watching Senate Bill 478 closely. This act would exempt school districts from the acquired number of school days that they make up due to lost... Due to inclement weather for the 2018-19 school year. It would require... Only require school districts to make up six days. If this bill, it has gone and out and what they call do pass out of the Senate Education Committee. It passed out at the beginning of the month, but we're waiting to see if it ever makes it to the Senate floor and/or to the House, and then whether the governor signs it or not. So there's no guarantee that this is gonna pass, so we are watching it closely. The last day of the legislative session is May 17, which is a Friday. So that would be before our main board meeting. So if there are any adjustments or anything, and this does pass, we would then be able to adjust the last day of school to that Friday, because that would be day number six for us. But as of right now, it is Tuesday, May 28, and we will be in session. So Ms. Zado is going to send us out tomorrow and post it on social media that as of right now it's Tuesday, May 28. And that way, the information gets out to our parents. And like I said, I'll be in touch with all of you if we have to make any adjustments. We'll make sure to let our parents know at that time. Do you have any questions?
What's the current point number of thirty?
It's a little confusing. Well, it comes down to this. You make up the first six that you meet, and it has to be inclement weather days. So several years ago, when we had the eclipse, and we took the day off, and it... That was not an inclement weather day, so that had to be made up no matter what. So if you miss the days... When you miss six days of inclement weather, you make up all six of those days. Beyond six, it's every other day. So you make up day seven, you're forgiven day eight. You make up day nine, you're forgiven day ten. And that goes on until you hit day fourteen. Day fourteen and anything beyond day fourteen is forgiven. I have the printout off of the Desi page with highlights to show us where we're at. Makes a little simpler to follow. But, like I said, last day of school, Tuesday, May 28th, right now. Okay? Next, we have principal reports. So I will turn it over to the principal, and let's see who's gonna go first. Maybe this is just... I'm getting angry.
Okay, we've had another busy month, but I wanted to highlight some of the things that I wanted to thank the community for. We did some service learning projects, and we also had McTeachers Night, and we earned $640. I wanted to thank everybody for coming out for McTeachers Night. We always have a great time with that. I think the kids like seeing us outside of school. Like, they think we live at school. And then we did a... It used to be called Young Brook for Heart, but it's called something for heart. But it's for the American Heart Association. And Coach does that with the kids. And we raised $2,434. That was a big year. The two highest... The two students that collected the most donations got to throw a pie in Mr. King Russo's face. And the little boy in the picture was the biggest supporter. He is a heart patient, and he took it to heart and went out and got a lot of money donated. Then down at the bottom, those two pictures are from Miss Roland's career lessons with first grade. They decided to set up little shops. They had a donut shop and a... Just like a chocolate fountain shop where you could dip strawberries and cakes in chocolate fountain. And they invited the parents of the community in, and they raised $143 for the American Heart Association. They planned the whole business. They decided that's where they wanted the profit flow to. They planned what they would sell, who would be there. They had security at the door. They had greeters. They had waiters and waitresses and a little cashier. It was a lot of fun. And then the other class donated to our Bloomsdale PTO, and they raised $65.79. So thank you to the community for supporting that as well. We had some positive office referrals this month. Lucas Palmer, he was very helpful to a little boy that we have in preschool, and he was going to get a screening, and he wouldn't go with the... It was Miss Bosler that was gonna take him for the screening. And this little boy said, "I'll go with you." He really likes me. So he went with him and helped with the screening. And then the little girl in the middle, Lucy Lichtenchip, she is like, "I would hire her a minute." She'd be a great teacher. She's helping our parent in the morning before school. And then Kennedy Bowen and Keely Fowler. And notice, they each have a little bit different certificate. We have three different ways you can get a positive office referral. A teacher can nominate you, or a staff. And then also, we have those little passes for Dragons Stand, the after-school program. You can get a positive office referral for that. And then the orange papers is that they can do a positive office referral on each other for being a good friend. So I want to point that out. Kindergarten registration, we had a great day. It went very smoothly. I was just impressed how it worked like a oil machine. We screened 58 students total. Forty-three was for Bloomsdale, three was for St. Joseph, and three for St. Genevieve. And nine were for our preschool program next year. As of today, I was working on our new kindergarten list, and we have 48 on the list right now because we had a couple from early childhood that didn't make it to screening. So they got added to our kindergarten list for next year already. So yes, it's very hard to predict. This is our teacher and staff of the month. Miss Brigatis, she is amazing. She is an hourly employee, but she wants to take things home and plan for her tier-three students. And she loves history, so she brought a lot of history to her RTI groups. And she... Really, the plan is that the teachers make the plans for those group, but she's like, "Oh, no, please let me do it." Because she loves history, and she loves kids, and she loves working with them. So we are so happy to have her. And then Miss Palmer, our kindergarten teacher. She is one of my lighthouse team coordinators for our leader, me. And she has really stepped up her leadership this year, and she is amazing with kids. And our leading and learning. We have a lot of stuff going on. I'll just hit some of the highlights. The top picture is Miss Nelson, Easter egg dying with the kids. She was working with two kids at the time, and they were talking about different colors, and what do you mix them, what do they make? And she had six different groups going in her classroom, and it was perfectly quiet. I mean, she's just that great at managing kindergarten students. And they were all focused and doing what they were supposed to do. Down in the bottom corner, that's the second-grade classroom. They are doing a nonfiction research on the computer. So they're doing that as early as second grade. And even kindergarten does that. And then the top middle picture is our outside classroom that PTO built for us. They're working on getting dirt put all around the outside edge, and that's gonna be a larbit all around the outside edge, which is neat. We have some of our recyclers, recycler leaders at the top. And then we have our library helpers. And then we have our helping hand helpers. They do odd jobs for teachers, like separating book orders and sharpening pencils. And then down at the bottom is my own child working on his math book at home. He's a preschooler, so he has math books. So we were working on writing our numbers, one to 10. So, I mean, anybody that says Leader Me is not for preschool kids, they are doing it and doing it well. And that's it, Bloomsdale.
Good evening, everyone. You have to bear with me. I'm a little froggy tonight. This calving season's been kinda hard on me. But let me get back here. We're all mixed up here. Oh, no. Okay.
And that's been the perfect...
It was a fast one. All right. Well, in our building today, I decided to put this slide in because in our building today, we had a big event. We had a student-led and building community action team-led assembly to celebrate our APR wonderfulness and kickoff math testing. So we have a big day planned tomorrow with a bounce house and all sorts of team building and fun events in the classroom. A group stayed after school and decorated the lobby with a beautiful balloon arch and all kinds of photo booth and all kinds of things. So if you're out and about tomorrow, come jump around in the bounce house. It's a great tension. And so we had... And assembly today, the teachers put on a really cute skit to highlight the good testing strategies, like getting plenty of sleep and eating light and using all of your strategies. And then the dancing dragons, which are led by Mrs. Megan Keker and Mrs. Amelia Wimire did cheers and a dance routine. And it was really a good time. And the high school band led us. We had our first running up the halls, so to speak. So thanks to Mr. Heaney and Mr. Mooney and Lauren Mercer and the whole band for coming over and letting our kids experience that. I thought he was gonna send over like five token players. No, the whole band came, and it was really fun. So we had a good time. So we had a big assembly today to celebrate. Oh, wait, let me back up. Oh, no. Okay. Learning, leading together, I wanted to point that out. So our steering committee, our professional learning community leadership team has come together this year, and we felt like, although we have an implied mission, we didn't have a stated mission statement in our building. So we brainstormed and we put together some ideas and we went through the process of developing some ideas, voting on with the staff, uh, sending them out to third, fourth and fifth graders as a vote and to parents. And I'll just load it all up and get it out to a Google form out to parents. And, um, learning and leading together was what the consensus was. About 70% overall chose learning and leading together. So that is our St. Genovity Elementary Mission Statement. And you will see that on the things we put out, so. Okay, so Building Community, like Lori, we're always trying to, uh, build community within our building and build community with the community. And so I knew that she'd covered quite a bit of some, some things, like our shared things, like kindergarten registration. So I didn't put too much of that in, but I do wanna say a big thank you to both Mrs. Zussman and Dr. Green because neither Mrs. Gegg nor I could actually even attend our own kindergarten registration. And of course that caused a lot of angst for both of us, but really, uh, they didn't need us. They did an amazing job and it went very smoothly and, and very well in our building as well. Some of the, some of the families were out, I think it was little as 45 minutes or something like that. Really went smoothly. So thanks for everyone for helping us that day. Uh, the other night we had the annual PAT, kindergarten and early childhood thing that they do every year called Know Before You Go. And you can see a picture on the far right there of Mrs. Kreitler working on a, on an activity with a student. We had 20 families come with their preschoolers and little ones. And that was a really good turnout. We had a lot of great stations set up and people had a very good time. Um, we've begun just, just yesterday, Hannah Fritsch-Dunsey came with her high schoolers and did Ag in the classroom. So again, we love those collaborative activities. And she has built and is giving both Mrs. Zussman and I a raise bed for our preschools. So, um, we're gonna thank her again for that building community within our buildings and with each other. Uh, we, up in the upper left-hand corner, our family action team did a pretty fun thing. They had put it out to families, a different activity every week. And if you went, you went home and you did your activity with your family and they could post a picture of you on our St. Genovity Elementary Facebook page of you and your family doing the little activity. It was usually something about how to live one of the habits. And they would put a lot of pictures up. So every time you did an activity, you got to put your name in a drawing. And at the end of it, seven kids were drawn, seven families were drawn. And we had some really neat, interactive, kind of old-school things, like a Twister game and a Jenga game and a Connect Four game and all kinds of fun. A bucket of Play-Doh with cutters, a bucket that had, um, popcorn and movies in it. It had some movies in it, some family things. So that was a big hit and we're, uh, continuing to find ways to, to do that. And then in the middle, I just put one token lead time picture. We have 17 lead groups now doing a lot of great stuff, but that happens to be a coding group. We have some older kids who code with our little kids, first graders, and they're, they love it. So coding is the rage right now. Okay, so our mission is learning and leadership. So I just, I pulled, like Mrs. Zussman said, there's a million pictures we can pull. But I feel like when we look at our kids at the elementary, we're really trying to build those 21st century citizens. And when it all boils down to it, you're trying to get kids to grow up to people, big people who can cooperate and work together and problem solve. So when you come by our classrooms, you will rarely see anyone just sitting there quietly with a paper and pencil. Sometimes yes, but a lot more of this. I walked into Mrs. Kreitler's room one day and as a former science teacher, I just could not take my eyes off these kids. They were gathering data on these plants. They're three years old and all day drawing and, and writing words with their words. And they had their magnifying glass up and they were truly like gathering data. It was the most endearing thing and I was like, you know, who says three-year-olds can't do some amazing science? And so, um, that's happens to be a preschool picture. And then in the middle, one day I, I caught upon some second graders building some simple machines out of some basic tools. They had a challenge and they were trying to build simple machines that would do the task that was, they were supposed to be able to lift so much. And then there, the third picture, um, those are some fourth graders who were graphing with jelly beans, which is very fun to do because then you get to eat your graph. And there are some third graders on the far right preparing for the math test, doing lots of hands-on math challenges and sorting out, making sense of numbers and figuring out how to solve problems with deconstructing the numbers and doing different things. So I'm proud of the way the kids are really learning to not only learn the facts and the knowledge, but to work together. And because that's what it's all about. Um, we had two big PTO events in the last month that I wanted to share out. First of all, our PTA is switching to be PTO, which is big news. We've been a PTA for as long as I can remember. But, uh, we have a new president, Sarah Jo Kelly. And she has worked with our executive board and the membership at large and with myself and Mrs. Gegg. And the decision was made to become a PTO for, for different reasons. Um, you are not that connected with the national PTA organization and, and the bylaws and expectations it has for you. You can kind of govern your organization a little bit more locally. So we just met last night and reviewed our bylaws and voted on them and are putting them into place. And many of the things will still be the same. We're gonna honor the traditions that weren't for us. And we're excited to have Sarah Jo Kelly in place. And, uh, so thank you to her. And so big two big events, the big dodgeball, uh, me and my gal dodgeball and me and my guy dance. So I had to put a picture of Coach Kreitler in there, so let's see how three gals in the dance. And, uh, we did some, uh, awesome positive office referrals too in the last month. So there we have Kirsten Gray, Brayden Foff, Jet Rumpold and Day Neville Sizer all went above and beyond to do something kind to a friend or help a teacher out above and beyond duty. I think that's our crew. Oh no! We had our fifth grade, uh, Title I Family Fun Night the other night. It was a Harry Potter night. The best-attended fifth grade family fun night that I can recall. We had, it was so fun. In Mrs. Beckett's room, you have four different magic potion states, uh, stations, which were really science experiments. And the kids got to build these, um, potions. And it was, that's what Mrs. Beckett's daughter Peyton dressed up there in, in Harry Potter cape. And in Mrs. Reynolds' room, there was Quidditch and, uh, Sudoku's that were all, of course, Harry Potter Sudoku's. In Mrs. Mudd's room, you got to make some troll snot, which very fun. Except that was that really warm day we had last week and it's very temperature-sensitive. It was a little dewier than it was supposed to be. And then in Mrs. James' rooms, they got to construct like Harry Potter, you know, and they, all the different houses have a different tie and scarf. So they got to, they got to do that. So it was a fun night with a huge turnout. So we're gonna thank all the families for coming to that. So, and that is, wraps up St. Genovity.
All right, well, you guys see me again. Um, Scott, it is the supervising track this evening. Um, and we sat down to go over slides and to figure out what to put in our slides and realized that while it felt like we have been insanely busy, we've been insanely busy because our teachers have just been cramming and reviewing and making sure our kids are ready, ready and ramped up for math. So we've really had our kids more in the classroom than we ever have and have tried really hard to not disrupt, to distract by walking in with my phone and taking pictures and all that stuff. So we have fewer pictures than normal, uh, but we still have some awesome stuff going on. So you'll see our map kickoff assembly. And I know that Bailey had already shared some of this out on social media. Uh, this was completely student-led and it was a Friday, seventh hour in April. Uh, so I might rethink some of those factors next time. Um, but I also processed, our kids did a really good job leading out. My girls, uh, that are student speakers, they wrote the script and they went and scheduled each different group that was, you know, made sure the rock band was playing or what song they were playing and told them when to be there and walked through all of those pieces. You can see my speakers, um, down in the bottom left. But I realized later, most of those girls didn't go through the Leader in Me. And that kind of started to make things make a little more sense. They're all working really hard, but I could tell them, some of them uncomfortable in front of the crowd and that kind of thing. And the two that are the most comfortable are sixth graders. So I did feel like that was a bit of a testament to the Leader in Me because my sixth graders are my most loudly spoken and comfy, um, in front of crowds, which is interesting. But they did a great job. Our rock band is one of our lead groups. So like you can see Brayden Hook in the middle in orange, um, they rocked out. They had a good time and played some songs that our kids knew and it was, it was enjoyable. But they only work together during lead time on Tuesdays. So that's not a band class. It's not anything of that sort. It's kids that just, um, you know, play music at home and wanna be a part of something. And so they, they did an awesome job. Um, you also will see, this is where some of our kids have been going when they were out of the classroom. Uh, we had math competition and we had a few students place. Um, Kennedy Dua was fourth on the sprint test. And, um, then the team finished fifth place. And our Athena McLem is very quick to email out. Just so you guys know, we were one of the smallest teams. So for us to get fifth place with only five kids, she's like, "This is a huge win." Um, so those five kids definitely held their own amongst the masses. Uh, Regional History Day, they were at SEMO. And if you look, it's a hard picture to see the kids, but it's a cool picture because you can tell where they are. Uh, and we did have quite a few placers that are moving on. Um, Landon Thompson took third, Brayden Hook second in individual performance. Uh, we had a group performance that took first, which was Colin Apt, Gavin Hook, Colin Fritsch and Nolan Walls. And then group documentary that, um, took second, yeah, I'm sorry, took third, was Ari Taylor and Maddie Terry. And third, and then second place was Tessa Grass and Maya Watts. So we had a really good showing and, um, those kids are gearing up for the next, the next phase on History Day. So they're moving forward. Uh, we did have a few positive office referrals. And one I'm gonna highlight, um, is not the most glorious part of middle school. But on the right, you will see Brock Woodward. And we had a little bit of a physical altercation start between two boys in the cafeteria the other day. And Brock is not small. And Brock, um, he ended up, he was quick, he was right there. We had teachers nearby, but Brock was closer. And Brock got in there and moved both boys out of the way and grabbed a hold of one that was still, you know, trying to escalate the situation. And I checked in with Brock later, trying to see what happened. And he said, "Mrs. Huppin, I was just close." And I looked around and Dr. Mercer was over there and Mr. Ellers was over there. And I knew, I knew she was writing. You know, so he was, he was very proud of himself and I was thankful that he was where he was. So, um, Caitlin Fowler was another and then Abby Donlon was another as well. Um, the Spotlight Award. Enjoy John Otto in that picture. I had a few. That was the only one where he looked a little less dastardly unless his eyes were closed. So we, we had the role of what we had. Um, this was a shared Spotlight Award and it was nothing planned. We, our, um, faculty and staff just nominate at our faculty meeting. And they were both nominated. And it was interesting because there were some that were just for John and some that were just for Melissa. And then there were some that people had thrown in and written on that were, you know, for the duo together. Uh, but it was fitting and good timing, I think. Um, I threw on some comments. One for Melissa, one for John, and then one that was a combined one. Uh, Melissa works extremely hard and juggles many tasks. She shows compassion and fairness to all students. John is very talented and shares it with his students and colleagues. He's fun to be around. And then the last one, um, I tried to be careful and I didn't cause too many tears in my email when I shared this out. Um, they will be greatly missed. They did an exceptional job with our school play, which we just had on Friday. Um, they go above and beyond for our district. And I think that, that right there speaks into both of them. I said, "We'll talk about it more at the retirement dinner so that we all didn't have to have tears today." Um, but even just working with them for a year, it's, it's crazy to see what those two do and, um, how willing they are to just jump in and do whatever we need. So definitely deserving. And here are some fun highlights. Um, Kayla Hogan Miller had her baby, Miss Raya, and shared that. That's one of my favorite pictures. She shared quite a few baby pictures, but that one, we keep scrolling on the announcements plums because it just makes her smile. Um, we also had Representative Dale Wright. He came and toured the middle school. And, um, Ari Taylor was talking to him. She was a good tour guy. And he walked in with Dr. Oldham and then he also landed in the library. And he sat and played on our Z spaces for quite a while. Um, he was beside himself for how progressive and technology and moving forward our district was. He caught up with Dr. Mercer at a lunchroom and he was very, very impressed and very complimentary and thankful to get in here. So that was a, that was a good visit and a good day. Um, and then, speaking of the autos, if you look in the bottom left, um, that is round one of the plays Friday night. And if you just check out the set detail and the costumes, and our kids just do a really awesome job. So the time that is put into that and it, it's an impressive thing if you've never got to make it, um, to any of our middle school plays. Um, coming up, we're still trucking along in math testing. We have put ELA behind us. That was last week. Um, we took this week off for math. Next week is science and then the following week is math. And then we can, we can check that off our list for the year. Uh, we do have multiple student trips coming up and we have lots of celebrations. Our eighth graders, um, are planning their celebration all themselves, uh, which has been interesting because they keep coming and I'm like, "I need to see your budget." Like, "What's your plan? What's this costume?" And then they're, they're like, "What do you mean?" I'm like, "Break it down. I need to see what the pizza costs. I need to see what your t-shirts cost." So they're going through every step. Um, so hopefully they'll, they'll have some skills moving forward in event planning and budget as well. But, uh, we have some good stuff coming up, you know, to the end of the year strong. And I think that's all I got.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Jerry for scrolling through my presentation. If y'all, if y'all ever had that feeling like you were gonna show up to class in your underwear or something, for the past couple of days, I felt like I updated the wrong presentation. And then I was gonna get up here and it was gonna be the one from last year or two months ago and I was gonna look stupid. But you put me at ease, so I appreciate that very much. Uh, this is Ms. Haley Fowler. She is a new teacher with us this year from Farmington in mathematics. She was our featured article in the past bulletin. And this was just a great quote because so many times, the lounge, conversations in the hall, social events get a negative connotation in education. It's like the death areas. And she puts a special twist on it and says, "So much more than contributes to the family feeling." So I absolutely appreciated her writing that. I kind of caught her off-guard and I know it was out of her comfort zone and I think she did an exceptional job. I don't have a whole lot for you today because I knew I would want to get to the next part of the board meeting, but I do wanna make sure that you guys have put a face to the Missouri Boys State people that we have going. Nolan Clump, Nick Geisler and Kobe Hadfield. And they are a big reason when I talk about how excited I am, how much, what I think our school's capable of and where I think we're going. Those three gentlemen next year as senior leadership, I think are gonna be phenomenal. Skills USA, for those of you that were at the banquet, you may have seen part of this, but I always think state competitions are amazing. And when you can get ninth and 11th and you'll see there under Danielle Naggar, first place in state, it's incredibly impressive. So again, faces with the name, that's Ashley Gretzma from early childhood. Danielle Naggar's the one on top in first aid and CPR. And Janet, and Ruble is the gentleman to the left, who if I had hair, it would be just like that. Word Fest winners, Mr. Banks. One of the neat things is there's a lot of different writing opportunities that we have in the secondary level, but it's very tough to fit them in specific places. Meaning, a lot of times our college preparatory students are busy with their collegiate coursework and that sort of thing. They don't have time for the extras. And one of the things I appreciate about Mr. Banks is he always seems to pick those up. And not only does he pick them up, but he takes students who you wouldn't normally think are great writers and they're great writers. And so in the mineral area college Word Fest winners, you had Reagan Meyer, Lindsay Martin, Trenton Voet, Noah Ogden. That's your top row there. And then your honorable mentions were Leila Franklin, Erica Reed, Miranda Gendren, Austin Runyon, Tyler Austin and Abigail Fates. And again, exceptional students, but really outside their comfort zone. I do wanna tell a little bit about, uh, Miranda Gendren, the young lady kind of in the black middle row, third over from the right with the glasses. She was contemplating being, and I think this is just the impact that school can have on students sometimes and our culture and our environment. She really, for three years, I could not get her to talk to me. I, I, and finally last year, I asked her boyfriend, I said, "If I just stood right in front of her and kept her from entering the building, would I finally get her to say hi to me?" And he said, "Yes, absolutely." So I did that one day and she was a little freaked out at first because I'm dancing to, you know, stay in front of her. And then she finally said, "Hi." When we got to first semester this year, she was convinced she was gonna be an early grad because school didn't have anything to offer. She was done. She had finished her coursework. She was out of here. She got to about November and withdrew that thought because she realized that just by coming out because she realized that just by coming out of her shell and by starting to talk to people, and you can really kinda sense the smile of the personality there, that she was growing as an individual. And she felt like if she left us early, she wouldn't grow in that manner. And she wanted that next semester. And she wanted to finish off her senior year. And she wanted to be here for that personal growth of just that social interaction and being a part of it and challenging herself. And she had a wonderful opportunity, and I think the hospital, she had a wonderful opportunity lined up at the hospital and actually passed it up to stay with us another semester. And that was one of those mature things that our students do sometimes that I was incredibly impressed with. And sometimes it was untold stories, so I thought I'd take an opportunity to tell them that. I appreciate those of you that could make it. As you know, this past week, we had our Dan Clark Honors Banquet. This was the 10th one that I was in charge of. Still have not run it into the ground, so I'm proud of that fact. The 11th one that I've attended in my 12 years, and I will tell you, I don't know what it was about this one, but this one was really special for me. I had a great night. And overall, when we got back, I heard a lot of people talking about just what, that they had a good time. And it truly was a celebration of education. I know in years past, I've always tried to hope that the students would do a standing ovation or this would happen or that would happen. And it never seemed to happen. And I think we had four of them alone in this night. To me, this was a very special night. We had Chris Warner as our guest speaker. Of course, Tyson Schaffner was there with patched overalls and the amazing work he's doing. I wanna tell a little secret that you may not, I don't know if I disclosed that night, but Bryce was performing for us that day. He was kind of a fill-in. We had to go to him about two days before and ask him if he could be good to go. And it took a little nudge in. But so the performance that he gave that night really was a fill-in performance. He'd been working on it, but did not know if he was gonna publicly perform it until about two days before. He did amazing. He did amazing, yes. Just to give you an idea, because normally I don't give numbers on this, but so you know, there are 55 top 10% and overall 117 class awards that were awarded that night. So to me, that is a huge accolade for education. And my staff, I think part of what made this one so great is just the interaction they had with students and what you heard when they talked about the students and just the personalities that came out. It really shows what's going on in our building. Finally, this event, just two days ago, Monday, or Monday, actually. You know, I've had the pleasure of working with them for many years and I've had the pleasure of working closely with them. And to me, there's a uniqueness about our staff when you really get to know them because although they're all amazing educators, they all seem to have a hidden talent somewhere. They all seem to be exceptionally good at something else. And we've known him to be a runner. And I knew that for years back, he'd set going to Boston as a goal of his to try to, you know, qualify and get there. And I figured he would at some point. But then to show up and run a 239.58. And then I asked him about it today. And I said, did, because he told me his goal was about three. To give you an idea, that's about a minute per mile quicker than what a three-hour run would do. And I asked him, I said, did you expect that? And he said, no, very modestly. I wasn't in any kind of shape. And in his mind, he was like, I wasn't in the shape necessary to run a 239.58. So, and this is that neat perspective that we have sometimes. I was like, so what was it? And he said, you know, the neat thing about that marathon is when you get close to the finish, and you can see the one on the right there is about at the 18-mile mark, which I would have been done seven thousand miles. But he's at the 18-mile mark. He said, they start to get to be about 10 deep and cheering you on. And he said, it's just a phenomenal feeling as you start to get close to the end of this thing. He said, they're throughout and they're there. But when you start getting, and he said, you just can't not run well. And he said, that's what it was, was just the spirit of the run. 607 average mile. And he finished 376th out of 30,088 runners.
Oh my gosh.
And you can break it down a little bit more. I don't exactly remember what it was. 359, I think, in the men's division is what his place was in the men's division. So, and then that dude on the right, I just put him in because he was my cheerleader for the day. Actually, there's a hill, if you don't know it. I've gotten to learn so much about this. And that's part of what's made it neat is he's brought the students in on it. And today, when he was walking around the building and to see them interact with them. There's Heartbreak Hill. There's four hills in the marathon and Heartbreak is the last one. And they say it's the worst, but he says that really, what makes it the worst is it's the fourth one. And there's a guy that stands there every year as you get on top of Heartbreak Hill and reminds them that you're over the hill. I am exceptionally proud of the work that John has done this year as an administrator. It has inspired me to see him interact with students and staff. He's brought a new life to us. But also to go out and accomplish a lifelong goal of his this week. I just can't tell you what it means to me, the staff, the students, and what John, you know, we're incredibly proud of. And that should be all for us tonight.
Absolutely, the best part of nothing.
In your board packets, there should be some safety reports. And that's the end of the report, Mr. Funtier.
Next, we have unfinished business.
Okay. Tonight, we were going, on your schedule, if you looked at your schedule. Tonight was the challenge presentation about our challenge program. But Ms. Clegg Horn is down at the high school gym participating in documentation. And it actually worked out well.
We kinda need some space.
We'll go up there. Do you want to explain how this came about? Do you want to do it?
Sure.
So most of you know me. You know that I've been coaching the speech and debate team and I also am the drama instructor. Every year, we take a readers theater to district competition and we also take a one-act. Readers theater is a challenge because you have to find books that the authors will allow to be adapted for a readers theater performance. Readers theater was originally created to try to spark interest in reading among elementary school kids. And now at the high school level, we use it for competition. This year, we had a really hard time getting permission to adapt any scripts or any books for readers theater. And so I asked the kids if they wanted to try to write their own. And they took that on. And I maybe have added two lines to this. They wrote the entire script and that makes me super proud. I asked them to talk about things that are a genuine concern to them and to write something about that. And so that's what they've done. They've produced their own piece. And they're super proud of what they've done. And so we're really excited to be able to show it to you all.
So we are gonna go out after getting set out.
Let's go.
How do you feel in the morning when you wake up to come to high school?
Tired.
I just wanna take a nap.
Excited.
Scared.
Why would you be scared to come to high school?
During the past year, there have been 38 school shootings in the United States alone, according to BBC.com.
The highest number of school shootings ever in America. It's a real problem that's only getting worse.
Teams are being forced to grow up in ways they should never have to.
It's hard to wake up at 6:00 AM every day just for school.
And sit in a classroom surrounded by peers, blind struggles that no one else understands.
Trying to stay a straight A student with a high GPA and ACP score.
All towards a future path I don't even know where it's leading.
Studying in and outside of school, but still not making the grades and still not making my parents proud.
You know the saying, if you fall down, get back up and try again.
It is so easy to say these words, but so much harder to act on them.
High school is so much easier with social media. I can take hundreds of pictures and edit out all my flaws.
Until I have the perfect picture to post.
Fake smiles are the best smiles.
I get up in the morning and put on my mask.
If no one can see my alley, then no one can tear it apart.
I wake up every morning and get ready.
I go to school and have stresses that no other generation has had to deal with before mine.
The last thing that I need to worry about is if I'm gonna come back home after school.
Something needs to be done. Or we'll be facing another tragedy.
Every month.
Every week.
Every day.
Unless we do something.
Listen to us. Pay attention to the things we say.
Focus on our mental health.
Look for warning signs.
But most of all.
Just be kind.
As Atticus Finch once said, you never really understand a person until you consider things from his point of view, until you climb in his skin and walk around in it.
What we lived through by the SGHS Reader's Theater of 2019.
The high school cafeteria where dreams come true. Depending what your dream is. Parties, babysitting, eating, and complaining, of course.
I get yelled at for cleaning the house instead of doing my homework, but then I get yelled at for doing homework instead of cleaning.
You think that's bad? My parents will let me on my PS4 so I raise my algebra grade.
I get yelled at for spending time in my room. But when I spend time in the living room, I want something.
OMD, me too. Then when I do leave, they assume I'm getting pregnant, high, and/or drunk.
My parents don't understand how much work I actually have to do. Like, I have a job and then I still have homework afterwards. It's just annoying.
So the police arrested my supplier last week and I don't know who else to get weed from for the party this weekend.
Go ask What's-his-face. He would probably know who to get some from.
I doubt I'll be able to go out this weekend at all. My parents have been stupidly strict since they found.
I can probably get you some, but I cost more than it normally does because it's the good stuff.
My jobs are requiring drug tests. I'd either quit my job or quit drugs. And I can't survive this school if I stop using.
You can't afford my prices with that job.
Hey dude, come over here. You know where I can get some? Not really. No help. Go away. No one wants you over here.
I'm so excited for the party this weekend. I wish I could go. I have to babysit.
Can I get paid?
Nothing. It's my little brother and his friend. They're creeps.
Where are your parents going?
I have no idea. They said they would leave Saturday morning and aren't gonna be back until Sunday night.
Then forget the other party. Let's just have one at your house.
Yeah, I'd rather be at your house with people that I actually care about.
Watch this.
I wish everyone just go away.
The English classroom where dreams come to die. And grades, essays, research papers, and assessments all contribute to this graveyard.
Stay in your seats as they take attendance. Afterward, you can move around and continue working on your essay.
How long does it need to be?
It's not like I haven't told you 10 times already, but 10 pages full-size. The title and the bibliography page are not counted as part of the page count.
Can someone shoot me? Honestly, same.
I'm set up being school fathers, losers, and freaks.
I'm gonna go jump off the bridge.
I wonder how many people will be sent to a counselor if teachers heard all this stuff.
Oh my gosh. I'm kidding.
If they did that, they'd run out of room in the office.
I mean, it's not like they ever listen to us anyway.
Public school counselors are the best. All right, settle down. There's a breaking news story from a city in California.
Why? What happened?
I'll turn it on the projector.
Breaking news out of Fresno, California. It's a horrific day for the students of Roosevelt High School. A junior run AR-15 with a silencer to a school assembly. The entire student body was in the gymnasium at the time. The junior injured 39 and killed 17 students. More story develops. Back to you, Jim.
I actually have an AR-15 at home.
How did you get that? Isn't that illegal?
Actually, it's perfectly legal. You just have to be 18 or older to buy a gun.
That's actually kinda cool.
Guess they didn't background check you.
He could totally be a school shooter.
Back to your essay, guys.
Passing time. Time to get to class.
Time to go to the bathroom.
Time to sneak in some PDA with that special someone. Time to gossip.
Hey, guys, can I talk to you about something?
Did you hear about Claire?
You mean how she tried to overdose and I broke her into work?
Lately, I've been having trouble.
Wait, I thought her parents put her in there.
No, her parents are gone. One is dead and the other's in prison. Her brother was her legal guardian, I guess.
It isn't that big of a surprise. She stopped hanging out with her friends after everyone found out she cheated on Marcus with the entire school.
I mean, I kind of understand. I don't really know where my mind is going.
Not me.
Well, nobody would cheat with you.
Why are you even over here?
You aren't their friend. Oh my god, just get out of here.
One day, they'll get what they deserve.
Oh my gosh. Did you guys see what Beth posted?
Why would you show everyone on the internet that part of your body?
She needs to cover herself. It's actually gross.
Really gross.
You know Elsa's gross? I think you mean who?
Oh my gosh, can you believe Beth? I can't believe she actually did that.
I know. She used to be cool and hang out with our group. I don't understand why she turned into that person.
It's just crazy.
And then what about Brad? Why would he date Valerie? He's totally out of her league. I mean, he plays on the football team and the basketball team. And all she does is ban and doesn't even hang out with people like us.
She's kinda weird, too. All she talks about is banning.
Like, geez, get over yourself and maybe talk about something interesting for once. Ban kids are losers. Basketball practice.
Every day, after school.
Until 5:30.
Shooting hoops and running drills.
I think you mean killing yourself with the workouts.
Messing around with other players.
And of course, being punished for not being serious.
How many laps do you think we'll have to run for What's-his-face's mistake last night?
Maybe if you actually run instead of jogging and making up excuses, you might score once before the end of the season.
Plan for perimeter. We'll be starting off practice with conditioning today.
Hey, What's-his-face, just start running after us. We're all gonna pass you anyway, so just save us the trouble.
Less chatting, more exercising. He's so lucky coaches here. I'd wear a chair if I could.
He's so weird.
Remember when he said he had an AR-15?
Remember when Jennifer jerked him at lunch?
Remember when he thought he was good enough to be cheated with?
He's so stupid.
He's weird.
What an idiot.
Why is he on this team? He doesn't do anything.
No kidding.
Hello, run!
January 13th, 2018.
School assemblies.
Nothing gets students pumped up more.
How else are students supposed to get ready for the big games on Friday nights?
Just the feeling of everyone sitting in the same place to support our teams.
It's a fantastic feeling.
Who are we playing tonight?
I don't know.
Of course you don't.
Hey, SGHS, how do you feel?
We feel good. Oh, we feel so good. Hey! Hey!
Hi, students. Welcome to the snowcoming pep assembly. As most of you know.
Tonight, the basketball team is battling the Art Smith High School Bobcats.
Does anyone even go to these games? Honestly, I can't remember the last time I heard about us winning anything.
Let's hear it for the basketball team and the cheerleaders for getting us pumped up for school spirit for tonight's big game.
Woo!
This is just annoying.
Let's get fired up!
We are fired up!
Okay, let's just get this over with.
Let's get fired up!
We are fired up!
This assembly, like in many other school events, is set with many pieces.
All of them are pieces to a greater whole, a mosaic that creates the health of high school. In this assembly, students are gathered on the bleachers, separated by class.
And in each class, the students are separated even more.
The populars in the front, the nobodies at the top, and everyone else in between.
This is high school, separated, judged, never tranquil.
As sociology professor once said, I am convinced we don't live in a generation of bad kids. We live in a generation of kids who know too much, too thin.
Bae.
Breaking news. Thirty-two injured and 10 fatalities at St. Genevieve High School. A shooter opened fire on a homecoming pep assembly in the school gymnasium at 2:18 PM this afternoon. Shots continued for 15 minutes, injuring 28 students and four teachers. The gunman also claimed the lives of 10 students.[1724.54]
Police have identified the shooter, though we will not be disclosing the name to avoid an accredit of the act. The shooter was found dead at the scene, taking their life with an AR-15 automatic rifle. The same weapon was used during the shooting, firing dozens of rounds on the crowd. Here at the scene, the time is two forty-eight PM, and as seen in the footage, emergency services remain in number. Police, medics, and firefighters aid the wounded and care for those left in shock from today's events. This is Danielle Harris reporting for Fox Two News. Back to you in the studio. No one expects their school to be the next target.
No one ever thinks about it.
We live in a safe community. It's nothing to be worried about.
Who would ever do this to my school?
Anyone. Everyone is capable.
When they are pushed to the limit.
Anyone can be that one person who takes innocent lives.
The person who breaks parents' hearts.
It might be who you least expect.
The person you never thought.
It's important to be kind. You never know what's going on in someone's mind.
You never know what's going on in another person's life.
The night before. Why? Why am I the only one with problems?
Everyone else has perfect lives compared to me.
No one has to deal with the same stuff as me?
I'm so stupid.
September thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Have you gotten your SAT D score back yet?
No, what did you get?
I got a thirty-two, and I already have large scholarship offers from the colleges I'm interested in.
Well, good for you.
You probably won't even have to pay for college, between your score and your parents paying for the rest.
Not everybody's that lucky.
Hey, maybe if you sell that trash trailer you call home, you'd be able to afford to get a degree in burger flipping.
Well, maybe if you weren't such a-
It's sad how all the money in the world can't buy you friends.
It's also sad that friends don't realize the lasting effects of their words.
No one else is sad? How others treat their peers?
Why am I so alone? Probably because I'm worthless.
And I can never do anything right.
December eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
A number nine, no pickles for... Oh, Jane! Hey, Jane!
Hey, got my food?
I just checked on it. It shouldn't take much longer.
You still don't have it? I ordered like twelve hours ago.
I'm sorry, Jane. We had a few people call out today.
That sounds like a you problem, not mine. Where's my food?
Look, it's right here, hot and ready for you.
Are you serious? This isn't even close. Can't you do anything right? Get over here now!
I'm sorry, but what did I do wrong?
Everything, you idiot. Are you totally incapable of doing the simplest task, like taking an order correctly?
I promised I'd put the order in the way Jane wanted. Maybe she forgot to tell me something, or maybe the kitchen did it wrong.
Oh, so now you're blaming the kitchen. Don't you know the customer is always right? Quit arguing with me and leave. You're fired. We only hire quality workers here.
Hey babe.
But, but out!
It's sad how little respect people have for each other.
Why am I here?
I don't do anything but ruin everyone else's lives.
Mom, Dad, I'm home.
She walks into her house realizing her parents aren't there.
Many times, she comes home from school or work, and is met with silence.
Many times, she falls asleep on the couch waiting for her parents to come home.
They silently sneak in, careful not to wake her.
So she's able to sleep.
But also, so they don't have to talk to her.
I am sick of you spending money on donuts and coffee every morning. We could get ahead if you would stop spending our money on stupid stuff.
Stop yelling. You're gonna wake her.
Why can't you make your breakfast at home? Is it really that difficult to make coffee?
All you do is nag, nag, nag. I'm so done.
Well, I wouldn't have to nag if you would listen the first time.
Why should, why should I listen when all you do is nitpick at every little thing I do? I can't do anything right.
It's not my fault you don't make an effort. It's not like it's hard to make the small changes I nag about.
Maybe the things you nag about aren't even worth bringing up.
Once again, you are acting as if the things that are important to me aren't important at all. When will you start to value my feelings?
Oh, I quit considering your feelings a long time ago. You aren't worth it.
Another night, another fight. I caused so many problems.
I wonder if it would all be better if I wasn't here.
No. It would not be better. Nothing would change.
If I left, everyone that hurts me would just hurt others.
I'm so done with being fake every day.
Acting like everything's okay when it's not.
I'm done with people and their perfect fake lies.
I can't take this anymore.
I can't do this anymore!
Students and teachers have been taught to watch for warnings, but they don't look for it. No one person can see everything that a student goes through. They see glimpses and forget about them a second later.
Or they think the student is just joking. However, the kids who suffer the most may never show any signs.
The best way to prevent these things is to be kind, check on your friends.
Pay attention to the people around you.
One person can take lives, break parents' hearts.
Destroy a community.
One person can laugh, can smile.
Can change a life. One person.
Can make a difference.
So reach out, speak up, and take a stand.
Because when you extend a hand.
You give someone an opportunity to grab hold, because sometimes that guiding hand is the only thing they have to cling to.
Just so you know, they placed fourth out of eight Reader's Theater teams, so not too shabby. We were hoping that we'd be able to place high enough to go to state, but considering that they were the only ones that wrote their script, I'm really proud of that.
I'll tell you why. We're number one in my opinion.
That should be shown in other business meetings.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I had seen bits and pieces of that, and so when we had the chamber leadership team here, Mr. Haney set it up that they could see that. And so we were watching it. It's very powerful, especially if you have a child in high school right now, and you know what he or she had experienced. But I thought it was important. I wanted to make sure that the board members saw it, and I'm really glad that Bryant's here and recorded it. It's something that needs to be seen, and it is really good. I'm super proud of those kids. So Mr. Haney and I are very appreciative that we were able to bring them in and got them all here, so, you know, it's just something that's just amazing, so.
All their voices, they were so, I mean, it was like it happened, it was happening to them.
It was great. Usually, the principal reports are the best part of it.
So that is the end of the instructional program presentation. We are going to have the challenge program presentation next month. So I just wanted to share that.
Next we have summer school.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first time working on summer school. Dr. Fleet left a good framework. I worked with Mr. Haney and the high school and the summer school teachers to attempt to come up with a schedule. It was a bit different this year because our dead period fell in the middle, and so trying to fit everything in beforehand really didn't work any way I tried to do it without having those teachers and students at school for an extended period of time. That would mean we would have to feed them lunch, plus after about noon, those kiddos are ready to go home early. And the teachers are as well. But so we did have to extend it a week after the dead period, but that does give everybody a chance to go on vacation, and I think Mr. Haney even got a call from someone who was appreciative that they had already planned their vacation. So if you look in your board packet, first semester will be May thirtieth through June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, and the times are roughly anywhere between seven forty-five and twelve thirty, and they adjust a little bit as we go to fit in the sixty hours that are required for first semester. And then second semester is June eighteenth through July twelfth. Once again, sixty hours for that semester. Eight to twelve thirty, and eight to twelve on those. So we did add Bloomstown Elementary and St. Gene Elementary, some times down there for kiddos in fourth grade who are reading more than one grade level behind where they're supposed to be reading, so that we can get them some remediation. We're required to do that by law. So we built that in there in case we had some students, and we have had a couple in the past. I put the application in for summer school as well as for the elementary program to D E C a couple days ago, and they went ahead and approved it, so we're good to go.
I moved to approve the summer school for two thousand nineteen as presented.
Second. Motion on the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have new business, addition of a stipend for girls wrestling.
I did ask Mr. Nix to come tonight and share information with you. He put the next two proposals together and has probably more information and details to share than I'm providing on the slide. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Nix if you're okay with that?
Absolutely. First of all, congratulations to everybody for not being the least stressed person in the room. It doesn't matter how well I dressed for this presentation. Don't cry anyway. Earlier, my daughter was in third grade musical, and before that, I was out on the farm doing stuff, so this is as good as we get tonight. Basically, what we have is, well, let me start with in the past what we did. In the past being last year and before. We had, we've always had girls, or we've often had girls who have wrestled on our teams, but because there was no such thing as girls wrestling in the state of Missouri in high school, they just had to wrestle boys. And very rarely did they have any matches against a girl. This past year, Mr. created the opportunity for schools to have girls wrestling as a state competition. So because of the, because of the numbers, it wasn't possible to have girls only wrestle against girls, but there were a lot of opportunities for our girls to wrestle other girls this year. As a matter of fact, the numbers of girls around the state that participated this year, the very first year, was way more than what the state thought it was gonna be. If I remember right, there were over eight hundred girls. Do you remember what that number was? Yeah, they, there were two hundred that wrestled last year. They anticipated four hundred this year and got negative. So there were, there were quite a few girls, obviously, around the state, and we had five. So a few of those had wrestled prior to this year, and of course, had to wrestle on the boys' team. But this year, they were able to wrestle as our girls' team, who was very successful. They were seven to oh in dual matches. And with those five girls, they went to the first ever district tournament at Union. Mr. Haney and I both went to that. And with three girls that, that won, or with those five girls, I'm sorry, they finished second out of all the teams that were there. And then the three girls that made it to state two weekends later, with all of those girls, they finished second in the state, just three girls. And there were teams that had a full lineup, meaning they had fourteen or more girls in their, in their lineup. And we started with five, and by the time we got to state, we only had three left. So our girls were very successful, including a second place finish by Kaylee Gross. But the reason that I, that I am here tonight regarding wrestling is to ask for an additional stipend. Not for an additional coaching position, because I don't think we have enough girls or will have enough girls to warrant adding a coach to our staff, but by adding girls wrestling, it did add extra work, extra time. So I'll give you an example. That district tournament that we talked about, that was two added days at Union High School that our coaches had to do. The Park Hill Central Girls Tournament, the second girls' tournament. These are all extra Saturdays, Fridays, Saturdays, that they had to, because of the addition, had to go to extra meets throughout the course of the season. Justin Roth is one of our, he's actually our middle school coach, and he, for years, has volunteered after the middle school season is over, before Christmas, and continued coaching at the high school through January and February. This year, Coach Bymel kind of put him in charge of the girls' program, if you will. Coach Bymel still did a lot of the paperwork, because it just made sense for him to do that. But when it came time to coach them in the wrestling room and at the meets, Coach Roth did a lot of that, of that coaching. So after talking with Coach Bymel, who felt that there was a need to have an additional stipend added to Justin Roth, Coach Bymel, when I talked to him and said, hey, is this something that you wanna split? Is this, how do we wanna do this? He said, no, Justin deserves this. He put in a lot of time, and, you know, I don't wanna take, he said, I don't wanna take any of it. I want Justin to have that stipend. So when I met with Dr. Fleet, we talked about how much should that stipend be, with how much extra hours were involved and so forth. And I think we decided it would be point zero two of the base, which would be around eight hundred dollars if I'm correct. Is that it? Yep, around eight hundred dollars. So I'm here asking you today if you would be willing to give Justin Roth an eight hundred dollar stipend with or zero point zero two of our base moving forward for the time that he puts into girls' wrestling.
He truly believes in the wrestling program, so he'd do it without the, the rate. But I'm not saying not.
Has been.
And he has.
And that's been a long time. If you guys have any questions too, I'm willing to answer them if I, if I know the answer and if I can find out.
Well, I, if we, if we could do it, I'd like to make that motion that we give him the eight hundred.
Oh, sorry. I have a motion on the second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next we have the addition of a stipend for football defensive coordinator.
Okay, so usually when we add a coaching position, it is because of the need for numbers. Basically, we have a huge addition of students who are participating in that particular sport. This is not one of those situations where I'm coming to you because our numbers are so high. As a matter of fact, I can remember back when I was coaching, over ten years ago, there was a year that we had a hundred kids, nine through twelve, that were, that were playing football. That number got all the way down in the fifties for a little while. It's now back up into the seventies, so it is higher than it has been the past several years. We have a good amount. We still have, unlike a lot of schools around us, we still have a freshman team, a JV team, and a varsity team. You'd be surprised how many schools, much bigger than us, don't have enough to do a freshman and a JV team, so it's hard for us to find freshman games. We've had to travel up north and play five A and six A schools because of that. But anyway, the numbers is not why I'm, I'm asking for this additional position. The reason I'm asking is because of the evolution of football over the past several years. Now, if you go to a lot of schools our size, they have a head coach, and they have an offensive coordinator and a defensive coordinator. And those three will meet and talk on the weekends and then come up with a plan, of course, with the head coach making the final decisions on everything. But then they are prepared and ready to go into Monday with the new plans for the new opponent on Friday. That's no different with us either. We've got an offensive coordinator and a defensive coordinator. The problem is that our defensive coordinator, because we are one, what we consider one coach short, our defensive coordinator is also our JV coach, which means that every Monday, he's either at home or traveling somewhere to coach our JV team when, and he's not at the varsity practice on Monday, when they're feeding information to the team on what we're gonna be doing offensively and defensively that week. So it's been a doable situation, but it's not an ideal situation. So what I'm asking is if we could add an extra position, which would be a JV coaching position, and if we do that, that would allow us to have two freshman coaches, two JV coaches, and then have our varsity head coach, offensive coordinator, offensive coordinator, and defensive coordinator. That way, those three can focus just on, for the most part, that varsity game on Friday night. All three of them can be at practice on Monday, every Monday, and not pulling that defensive coordinator away for a JV game every week. So that's what I'm hoping for. That's what I'm asking for, and I think if you look at a lot of the schools around us in our conference, that's what they have. Their varsity coaches, their coordinators are there at practice on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, before that Friday night game. Any questions about anything?
And you're asking for the six thousand, six thousand?
Yes, yes. So the defensive coordinator also. So right, right now, our defensive coordinator makes the stipend of a JV coach, and our offensive coordinator makes more. Well, that defensive coordinator is putting in just as much time. As soon as Friday night is over, they get up on Saturday, and when they have time, they start watching film on Huddle of the next team. They're doing the same thing on Sunday, and then they're going into Monday with a plan. So they're putting in just as much time as the defensive coordinator, as the offensive coordinator is, but they're not making the same amount of money. So we already have that established of who our defensive coordinator is. They're just not getting the money of the time that they're putting in.
So this would mean the defensive coordinator slash JV coach would take over this position, and then we'd have a JV coach that would be replaced.
Correct. Yes, I know it's kind of confusing, but yes, that would be, basically be creating a defensive coordinator's paid position. But yes, that would be, basically be creating a defensive coordinator's paid position instead of just an assignment to a coach. And that would free up that JV position that he is currently filling.
Now I want to go back to one step then.
Okay.
If we would pay him that, and I'm not saying that's too much or whatever, do you think we're giving Justin enough for what he's doing?
I do, just because he was, well, the amount of additional hours being put in by Justin is still much smaller than what this defensive coordinator is doing on, on the weekends, on Friday, Saturday. They're coaching seven days a week, is basically what they're doing. And, you know, Justin is, is definitely putting in the time. He's definitely putting in the hours. I just don't know if he's putting in as many additional hours as what I do.
Well, and I wouldn't expect it to be that amount. I just wanted to make sure it was enough for what he's doing.
And keep in mind, this isn't a $6,000 addition to what he's already making.
Right.
It's just a bump up to that from what he's already making.
And each of these positions on the coaching schedule is based on the amount of hours that they put in.
Right.
I'll move to approve the addition of a stipend for our football defense coordinator for 2019, '20 school year.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, approval of health, dental, vision, and life insurance rates for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Did they go down?
They go down. I, I, I'll begin.
Great rates, we need. Okay, you all have a copy of this, this presentation you have to hand out. When you're looking at, oh, I'm all the way Jerry. There we go. When you're looking at the left side, at the, the caption at the top is orange. This is the information from 2017, 2018, '19. This is our current plan. And then on the right with the blue caption, this is the proposed health insurance for 2019, '20. If you're looking over on the current plans, our participation rates for the PPO 1, we have about 5% of our employees participating in that buy-up plan. For PPO 2, which is also a buy-up plan, we have about 27% of our employees buying up to have that PPO plan. The board paid plan is a high deductible health plan. So it does have an associated health savings account. And we have 29% of our employees participating in that fourth paid plan. Then our fourth plan is another high deductible health plan, and it has what we call a higher health savings account. With this, this plan, the district is paying less than it pays on the board paid plan. So the district does contribute to the health savings account. And so this year, the contribution is $85.58. We do have nine employees who do not participate in our health insurance plan because they have spouses who have very rich health plans. And so it's a better decision for them to be on those plans. But I kind of wanted to give you the participation rates because the plans we're looking at for next school year, the consortium decided to stay with United Healthcare. And so the four plans that we're looking at tonight are the exact same plans that we offer this year for our employees. There is an increase. There was a 4% increase in our, in our health insurance, which we, I was very happy with when it was all over because we started somewhere above 9%. And so we worked our way down and it got it down. And I'll point out some of the things that happened to get it down. If you look at 19, '20, our health plans go up about $20. And so you get to that high deductible health plan number two. It's a little bit less. So next year, the contribution that the district would make to a health savings account for anyone that goes on that plan would be $89.02. This next set, the top section is the monthly expense. The middle, the section right under that is the annual expense. So you can see what the employees are paying on the buy-up and what the district is paying for each employee and what the contributions are to the health savings account for that high HSA. Down at the bottom on the first page is a list of the benefits. The information that you see here is just the in-network information. I did provide you another handout that has the network and the non-network in case you were curious about those numbers. But anything under the new plan on the right that is in red is a change. So the change really took place on the individual out-of-pocket maxes and then on the prescription drugs. The tier three went up and, yes, the tier three on the regular prescription and then the mail order, they both went up. So those are just the differences. The rest stayed the same. So I know this is a lot of numbers and a lot of information. But this is the proposed health insurance plan that the consortium has made available and that the committee met and discussed and had a consensus to move forward with.
Last year was the big change in all of this?
Last year was the big change. We moved from a PPO board paid plan to a health savings account.
How much was that increase from previous year until where we're at now?
Last, when they started working through the process with Anthem last year, the rate increase was going to be 21%. So the consortium put out bids and went with United Healthcare. I think it was a 12% increase. And even with the bids out, Anthem still said the price increase was going to be 21%. They wouldn't come off of it, even though they knew that they were up against Anthem. I mean, United Healthcare. So we made the move. You know, part of being on a high deductible health plan is that you have to be a better consumer of your insurance. And I think people are learning that. You know, if you have to have an ultrasound or an MRI, shop around. Don't just go to your hospital where your doctor tells you to go to. Call metro imaging, call the other companies that do that service. See what, you know, how much you're going to have to pay with your health insurance. You just have to be a better consumer. So, you know, just trying to educate people. Like I said, majority of our employees are on the high deductible health plan number two because they want that contribution to their health savings account. The other reason that some people are doing that is we used to have, I forget what it's called, where you could put money aside and you could use it for your healthcare expenses. Cafeteria plans, but if you didn't use it, you lost it. So we have more people that are realizing the benefit of that health savings account. It rolls over. It's your money and it builds.
What percent would you say around that? HT, HPT?
39.
And that's the one that has the lowest increase, it looks like?
Yes, and actually, if you look at the benefits on the number of health, eight, twelve, high deductible health plan number two, there are no changes in that plan at all. No max out-of-pocket increases, but nothing else.
You know, just the difference in blood tests.
And it's a little bit of a shift. But, you know, if you're healthy, health savings account is really great. Or if you're really sick, then, you know, you meet your deductible right away on the high deductible health plan, and then everything's covered, so. If you turn to page two, page two is the dental and vision plans that I wanted to go over with you. Part of the reason that the increase dropped to 4% is that we, as a consortium, are moving dental, vision, and life insurance to United Healthcare. That was an additional like 2.6% savings if we did that. If you look at dental, the monthly cost that we're currently paying is $29.59 per employee. It will increase to $24.91 for an employee to add a spouse, children, or a family. There are slight increases on those numbers too. But it is the same exact plan. It's the same format that you saw in health insurance, with first the monthly expense, then the annual expense, and then the benefits. The only thing that is different on the dental benefits is something called a UCR. UCR is usual, customary, and reasonable. Which means if you go out of network, they base the payments on what? Nine out of 10 dentists charge on that procedure? And then you would pay, they would pay 90%, and then you would pay the other 10. On the Lincoln plan, they, it was 95%. So under United Healthcare, it's 90%. But whenever you look over at the vision, we're currently paying $6.85 a month. And so it will drop to $6.23. So there is a small savings on the vision side. And with the vision insurance, the benefits are exactly the same. Nothing changes. Same services, same allowed cost, it all stays the same. I looked at the list of dental providers and our local dentist room there. Okay? And then the last piece is the life insurance. The life insurance, again, is a savings. We're currently paying .155 for $1,000 of life insurance for our employees. And we carry $30,000 worth of life insurance on each employee. With United Healthcare, it will drop to 14 cents. So we will see a savings on that. With, you know, the increase in the healthcare and the dental and the decreases in the vision and life, I feel like this package is very manageable for the district. And I would recommend that you go ahead and approve it so I can get the enrollment process started and get tanned and calm down. Team radio.
I guess the life insurance, the policies to the same amount?
Yes, we're going to keep it at $30,000.
But a $39,000 savings is a $30,000.
So it offsets some of the expense for the health insurance quite nicely.
And we're part of a consortium, so to go outside that would be not smart.
Yes, if you're a really healthy district and you don't have any health, a really healthy organization, I should say. You know, you can explore the option, but we all know life happens. And people don't stay healthy and really bad things happen sometimes. So it, you know, there's power in numbers of, I'm trying to think how many people we have in the council. I'll say 3,500 plus compared to 273, which we currently have on our, is probably more than 3,000. But, you know, there's power in numbers, you know? That's what helped us get to just a 4% increase.
4%? Compared to the past few years.
Yes.
But don't let them know that.
Don't say it too loud.
Okay, I move to approve the health, dental, vision, and life insurance for the current school year.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. On to action for a closed meeting.
I move that the Board of Education holds a closed meeting with a closed record, a closed vote following the regular open meeting on May 21st, 2019, to be held in the R W Thomas Library, 7151 St. John's, Missouri, for purposes discussing and voting upon the following items, business: legal action, cause of action, or litigation; lease, purchase, or sale of real estate; hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees; proceedings involving the mental or physical health of identifiable individuals; scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals; testing and examination materials; welfare cases of identifiable individuals; preparation for negotiations with employee groups; software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof; specifications for competitive bidding until approved or published; sealed bids and related documents till the bids are opened; sealed proposals and related documents till all proposals are rejected; or any documents related to negotiated contracts until the contract is executed; individual identifiable personnel records, performance training, or record pertaining to employees or applicants for employment; records protected from disclosure by law; technology and technological innovation which the owner has proprietary interests; record relating to municipal outlines established for reporting of abuse and wrongdoing; confidential privilege in communication with the auditor; operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident; existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property; the portion of a record that identifies security system or access codes; records that identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration, the components, or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network; credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authentic code that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move the notice of this meeting as intended to the agenda be posted as required by law.
Second.
And a motion in a second, roll call, Eric Baller?
Yes.
David Bullock?
Yes.
No vote?
Yes.
Jim Kreschner?
Yes.
Arthur Reesner?
Yes.
Mr. Rubio?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
I'll move to go to a closed session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.